Good evening, I'd like to call this evening's Planning Board meeting to order. First item on the agenda this evening, we do not have any minutes to review and approve, we do not have any bills to review and approve, so I'm gonna start with Board Member comments. Is there any member of the Board that has comments for this evening? Matt?
No, not at this time.
Do you know?
No comments.
Fair enough.
No comments.
No comments.
Alright, let's turn it over for Staff Report.
Nothing this evening.
Oh, we are cruisin'. Okay, next we have Meetings and Hearings. First item this evening is the Proposed Residential Kitchen Special Permit. This is a continued public hearing for 1 Brookdale Circle. Do we have the... Good evening, how are you? Can you please just give us your name?
My name is Asama Henderson.
Hey.
And I'm from 1 Brookdale Circle, and we...I was supposed to talk to my condo board to get a decision, and Jim right here is a representative from my condo board. We haven't reached that decision yet.
You have not reached a decision yet?
Not yet.
Okay, understood.
No, we should be able to reach it very shortly, though. We met, the Board met, we actually brought in our legal firm, got some answers and stuff like that, so we just have to bring the Board back together for a special meeting to try to get this sorted out.
Understood, okay. Sounds like there's some good progress that's been made. So, I guess we need to make a determination. Steph, do you have anything?
Yeah, so that was the last outstanding item. I think it's the discretion of the Board from the discussion last time. We wanted to see that that discussion was progressing. Certainly, no decision that the Board makes would have any impact on the HOA and their rights in terms of this process, so the Board could choose to, you know, either close the hearing or even render a decision at this case. We do have a draft decision that's...sorry, we are in the process of developing that draft decision, but they could close the public hearing, or if they feel, you know, to continue to the next month, if they anticipate additional information.
Okay, and I know I would think that perhaps one of the items that we could put in as a condition is to just make this, the contingent, to make sure that it's acceptable with the HOA, but I'd open it up, I'd welcome other Board members to give any comment, thoughts on this, if we think that we should close it tonight and proceed, or what do you think?
It's something that I'm in favor of taking a vote on, but it's regardless of, you know, the way we vote, I'm certainly in favor of it, but the HOA has the last say.
Right.
I agree with that.
Same here.
Alright, so perhaps what we can do is, let's make a motion to at least close this hearing, and then as, perhaps as you draft the decision, we can put in a condition that makes mention of some kind of contingency upon the HOA?
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
You have to take public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item this evening from the public? Alright, seeing none, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
I'll make a motion, close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Alright, so then, is there a motion to proceed with...
So we don't have to do that, no, so we'll just take the decision up at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll have a decision at the next meeting, alright?
Aye.
Alright, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Proposed Gas Station Site Plan Approval, Lake 20 LLC. This is a continued public hearing for 193 Hartford Turnpike.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you want to display it to me at the meeting, so...
I can try, yeah, it'll take me a few minutes to pull it up. Looks good on my screen, not on that one.
It's on that one.
Yeah, it just won't go on presentation mode.
I mean, as long as we can see the slides, we can just scroll through them, right? Okay.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Mark Donahue with Attorney Donald O'Neil on behalf of YACCO Energy. With us also this evening is Robin Michaux of MDM Transportation to review the site plan application for YACCO Energy. I thought it would be worth taking a moment, because this has been pending for a while, to go backwards a little bit, refresh the Board where we've been, and bring a matter forward. So, if you could advance it, Chris. To please recall that the uses in question here, the car wash, the convenience store, and the automobile fueling have all been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals back in October of 2024 by unanimous vote of that Board. As part of that decision, the Board made a specific finding that those uses would not create a nuisance by virtue of noise, odor, smoke, or vibration of traffic generated by the site as required by the...
Sorry about that.
No worries. Since that approval and the original filing of this plan, the project has been to Mastod, and since that process, Mastod has issued a Section 61 finding that acknowledges the access and egress points for the site are subject to a permit, and that permit will be issued by them. So that has been fully vetted through the MEPA process in every fashion. All of the access drives as to permitting only a right-in, right-out for Route 20, as you know, have been now approved by that. Certain design criteria and design details requested by Mastod have been incorporated into the plan, and part of that plan, as we would expect would be part of your approval, is important that there would be a post-occupancy transportation monitoring program in place to monitor that. The projected impacts of the development are gonna be consistent with the results after occupancy and for a period of five years after that. Since then, going through the process here with the Board of the Site Plan Approval, all peer review has been completed, there are no open issues with any of the peer review. So I wanted to focus on particular of some areas of concern from previous meetings that the Board has expressed, and review kind of in a global fashion how the plan has tried to respond to those. One of the significant issues in which has been discussion is a concern of tractor, diesel tractor trailers leaving the site and attempting to go eastbound in some fashion, making the turn either across Route 20 or otherwise. There's been some steps taken and some that are proposed here. We're suggesting adding an informational sign that will face westbound at the most easily entrance, and I think the next plan shows the location of that, the next slide shows the location of that, so that it's clear for a vehicle entering the site from the eastbound turning lane that's available, that if it is a tractor trailer, that there is no access available from the site to return to that eastbound direction. So they will at least be entering the site with that knowledge. As indicated, the driveway has been configured in a fashion, so it is right-in, right-out. In addition to that, stanchions have been added to be shown within Route 20. If you can go to the next slide, Chris, to show those highlighted sections. Those stanchions, just for your benefit, I think Mr. and Ms. Michaux can speak directly to those, as he's used those in other projects.
Yes, in fact, MastDOT has used these in other areas of the state on state highway. The next slide actually shows an example of that on a state highway, Route 114, in this case in Danvers, in a location very similar to what's being proposed here. They're shown on the left of that photo, opposite what is a access-restricted driveway as we're proposing here. They can be very effective, and they're easy to maintain, they're easy to install, and will be the subject of the access permit process upcoming.
If you go to the next slide, Chris. A concern was expressed about vehicles leaving the diesel fueling station and attempting to turn right to access the Lake Street Light in order to make that turn. Taking a closer look at it, as you can see in the slide, MDM applied turning movements for such a vehicle in trying to make that type of maneuver, and it's physically impossible to do that in a direct line, it would take multiple points of turn, as Bob can describe in more detail.
Right, this model was presented to the Board previously, and the swept path from either of the fueling positions to the area of the drive-through is, would require that you sweep a distance of about 50 to 60 feet. That driveway width, if you will, is 24 feet wide, so as Attorney Donahue has pointed out, it's not possible for one of those vehicles to actually get to Lake Street from either of those fueling positions, and that's by design. And likewise, on the subsequent slide, any access from the Lake Street side, which really, you know, I'm not sure who would want to do that, but we did model a vehicle in that orientation, making a left on the Lake Street and attempting to make a right into the driveway is, again, impossible. You'd have to actually point the vehicle into and over the left turn lane, and to make a wide sweep, in which case the cab would actually go over, you know, about five, five to eight feet of curb at the driveway, take the entire width of the driveway to be able to maneuver that. Any licensed professional commercial driver would never attempt that. So, by design, the site is constrained in a way that will not allow those movements to take place. We are sensitive, however, to the needs of the fire department, and the design specifically of the Lake Street driveway, which we went back and forth with the fire department on, will allow for the access from the north, left turn in, right turn out by their largest responding vehicle, right? So the geometry of that driveway specifically addresses that one concern that was raised during that consultation.
So to summarize, the only way in for a diesel truck or tractor trailer is by using the pocket left turn lane for eastbound. There's going to be a sign there notifying that before they make that move, that there's not a way to continue eastbound on Route 20. Once on the site, they are directed and physically can only get to the Route 20 exit for the site. That is marked, designed, so that it only is for a right turn out, and stanchions are within now Route 20, which would prohibit any vehicle trying to somehow make that dangerous move all the way across. So, the applicant has done what it can to try to address that concern, and we're glad to discuss any remaining concerns of the Board.
I might add, Attorney Donahue, that one of the simpler ways to look at this is, question arises, what if someone is not familiar with the restrictions on the site and need to return eastbound? The practical answer to that is that there's a rather direct route to continue to go eastbound, and that is to exit onto Route 20 as a right turn movement, onto Lake Street, directly to Route 9. The distance that it would take to do that maneuver, to get to the Route 9 interchange at Route 20, is only two minutes longer than continuing on the Route 20 quarter in this way. That Lake Street quarter is an arterial roadway, it is not subject to heavy commercial vehicle exclusions, we've checked on that, and it was a question that was raised by planning. So it is a viable route, and in fact, heavy commercial vehicles do use that route to get to Route 9 today. We've quantified that in the submitted technical appendices of the traffic studies. So it's not, the site will not serve as a trap, if you will, for those folks who, for whatever reason, do want to continue to go east, although we strongly believe that the commercial vehicle activity that will be inclined to use the site will not only be familiar with the site, but will be more oriented to the westbound direction as a right-in, right-out type movement. So we properly accommodate all movements, and we're not precluding the ability for vehicles to get to where they need to. We're simply restricting the movements that we want to be sensitive to in deference to neighbors and community input and to MastDOT consultation, and that is the direct left turn from the site under Route 20. Thank you.
Another issue raised during the previous discussions related to the loading area behind the convenience store, and the concern expressed that people utilizing that loading area would need to cross the drive-through lanes. We've created an alternative design for that loading, to present to the Board, which is not shown real well there.
Yeah, you'll have to zoom in.
Essentially moves it to an area that had been parking on the previous plan. The plan had 10 parking spaces behind the convenience store and outside of the diesel fueling area. Two of those spaces remain to be zoning compliant, the other spaces are an alternative loading dock area, loading area. The benefit of this is that it takes the loading wholly away from the drive-through, allows the establishment of a crosswalk or sidewalk that they would utilize to then go in front of the drive-through way and go into the store through the front door, and it is an alternative that is available, and therefore eliminates the need for delivery people to traverse the active portion of the lane. They'd be crossing the drive-through where the vehicles are stopped at the stop line, getting their service at the window. And Bob, you did a movement just to demonstrate how vehicles would leave that area also.
That's correct, right? So the shaded area that's immediately to the left of the diesel refuel, those are the underground storage tanks, that is the area that was originally marked as eight parking spaces, that would be designated as a gourd area for purposes of the loading and service. And this model shows the largest potential vehicle that would, actually, this is the, if you can scan up, I think this is either SU40 or the tractor, yeah, this is the SU40 vehicle, this is a typical delivery-type vehicle, and it shows that the swept path both into and leaving that area is adequate. And we've got a second version of this, it shows an even larger vehicle, a tractor-trailer doing the same movement to and from in this diagram that's up on the screen. So we know that geometrically, it's an efficient area for that to occur.
And then the third concern expressed was a concern that queuing, which is existing in peak times now on, at Lake Street, at the Lake Street Light, would worsen as a result of the activity of the operation of the proposed facility. And that question has been addressed by MDM and reviewed by your peer review consultants, and that condition is that the condition will not worsen as a result of the YACCO operation. But the YACCO site does provide an opportunity for a solution or resolution of that issue by adding some additional land for the potential of a fourth lane, that I'd like Mr. Michaux to describe to you what the possibilities created.
Right, thank you, Mark. So in a color format, what we've done is to develop two concepts, schematic concepts that would indicate areas of land acquisition or easement that would be required to add that fourth lane. Early in our consultation with DOT, in fact, they raised the question, is there a possibility of securing an area to allow that to happen? And our response at that time was that there was nothing that we were proposing that would preclude the ability for that future project. This exercise memorializes that opinion and allows the applicant and landowner to definitively identify an area of easement or other agreement with the town that would grant sufficient land along its frontage to allow for this future improvement. Now, there are also other parcels that would be required to provide an easement or some form of acquisition as well as us, so in that vein, we've actually looked at two alternatives. The first that's on the screen right now shows an expansive area of green on the right side of Lake Street. That is the area within which an easement or an acquisition wouldn't be necessary. You'll see that, on average, that is about a 10-foot offset from the existing property lines along that edge, and it would affect the town pump station and some of the infrastructure associated with that structure. To a lesser degree, on the west or left side of Lake Street, you'll see a smaller green area along the bus terminal property that would also be required. So today, you've got a 50-foot right-of-way, this would propose a 70-foot right-of-way, which would be sufficient, not only for the additional southbound lane, but also sidewalks on both sides of Lake Street. So we've taken a master planning objective and determined what the worst or what it should call best case is for a longer-term improvement. The second version of this...
But before you go on to that next option, can you, with this particular option, what does that do, are there impacts to your entrance and the swings for vehicles in and out?
Correct, so the answer is no. All it does is it introduces a sidewalk across the driveway, essentially.
Okay.
It does not affect any of the swept path movements that we discussed earlier, it does not impede the ability for fire access either left in or right out, and it would continue to not allow, physically not allow, for the tractor-trailer movements to occur at the site. So it's really pretty inconsequential as it relates to the functioning of the site. All of the landscaping, the parking, and the other features as currently proposed in the site would not be affected by this, by potential widening.
Okay.
The next slide shows an alternative version of this, where the widening is principally occurring on the west or left side of Lake Street. You'll see that it would eliminate the need for acquisition easements, takings, or impacts to property anywhere north of our site on the east side, so no impact to the town pump station, no acquisitions required to work within the existing right-of-way. On the west side, there's a more substantial easement or acquisitions required, but does not in any way materially affect the ability for those sites to have proper circulation, access, et cetera. And in either case, what we've done is identified the area along the applicant's site where the easement would be granted, allowing either of these options to occur. So there's some design flexibility that's built into these schematics that would need to be refined to value-engineer a solution. For instance, we're not certain that the town would want a sidewalk on both sides of the road, they may only want one sidewalk on one side or the other, and so we've been, as I mentioned earlier, conservative. We've shown a best case of 70-foot layout, that could actually be reduced somewhat, in which case some of these green areas could actually be reduced or minimized. And we also match in with the existing shoulder areas that exist on Lake Street, there's a four-foot shoulder, for instance, on the right-hand side of the road that we're retaining, two-foot shoulder on the left, those could flex to allow wider or narrower lanes. So there's absolutely design flexibility in how this can take place, and in this option too, as we refer to it, really beyond the site itself, the applicant's property would result in a fairly modest, you know, land acquisition to the west. So we're comfortable that this is potentially in the cards, and the net benefit of these is not hard to imagine, in the evenings and Saturday mid-days in particular, having that additional southbound lane will substantially reduce the vehicle queues that currently exist on that roadway. The next series of slides show the outcome of modeling that we did on this to understand how it would function, and they show typical queuing conditions. Before we get, that green area is actually the area on that slide, Chris, that you just had, Christopher, that you just had. That is the specific area that we're talking about being donated through easement or some other agreement. Just to be clear, it's a 10-foot offset from a property line, it wraps around the corner of the radius, would allow for the construction of a sidewalk and a widening as well along that edge, under either scenario. The next slide shows the operational outcome. This is an average or typical queue in a weekday AM peak hour with these improvements in place and with optimal signal timing and phasing. Vehicle queues, on average, are going to be about four vehicles per lane, less than the right turn lane. The next slide shows a midday, or rather, an evening condition where those queues are, in fact, a bit longer, but very manageable, certainly relative to today's condition. And on a Saturday midday, nearly identical to that type of a scenario. So substantial improvement, and, you know, the applicant wants to, and has listened very carefully to the concerns of this Board, to the ongoing discussions that other landowners are having with MastDOT and the town as to what would make sense here for an improvement. This applicant is attempting to do what it can to advance those longer-term plans through this type of a commitment.
So a condition of approval around that easement is acceptable to the applicant, certainly agree on the specific terms. So, just in conclusion and focusing on the 12 criteria for site plan approval as described in the bylaw, we believe that the site plan is presented meets those criteria. There are no issues with regard to any of those criteria raised by peer review consultants in any fashion, and we welcome the chance to discuss any additional concerns that the Board may have relative to approval of the plan. Thank you.
Chris, do you have any items that you want to...
No, I think as noted, much of the kind of discussion and amendments to the decision, the draft decision that's been for the Board, were related to the condition and the roadway widening, so we've kind of memorialized that, and certainly these schematics are, I think, what were contemplated in terms of those initial stages. So, the intent is that we would tie that to an additional condition that should their post-occupancy traffic monitoring require improvements, this could be an improvement that would be considered for implementation by the Board as a implementation step, so...
Okay, and a couple of questions related to that. I guess the first question, how does it get implemented?
So, yeah, so if their traffic monitoring requires, their post-occupancy traffic monitoring indicates that additional mitigation for traffic is required as part of that regular process, the town can compel implementation through that condition of this roadway, so that would be at the ex... So that would be at the expense of the applicant. Should their obligations for traffic monitoring not be, not trigger that additional mitigation requirement, the town would still, through this schematic, have some progress in terms of pursuing that on their own, you know, accord.
Okay. The other question that I had is if you were to look at, on the applicant's side of the road and putting an easement in place for these improvements, I understand that it does impact the pump station. Where the pump station is located, does the town own that land? Or is there already an existing easement for the town to be within that area? So there's essentially no takings involved with that? Or...
So we'd have to look at the specific language in the easement. My gut tells me that the language is not going to allow us to do this type of work within the language of that easement. So I think there would be some additional takings or, you know, process that would need to take place in any of these cases. So certainly through this process, we can't compel those property owners to give that. So they've committed to the easement of the property that's under the ownership of the applicant, so.
Sure. Okay. I did have another question. It's just, I'm drawing a blank on it right now. But other board members, are there questions, comments?
I have a question. The plowing of Route 20 is by the state, am I correct? What happens if those yellow stanchions get moved or knocked down or whatever? How's that going to be maintained?
In other areas of the state where they are used, they are located within and are the property of MassDOT and are the maintenance responsibility of DOT. In the photo that I showed in the Danvers case, one of those 20 or 30 stanchions was impacted. And in those cases, those are regularly replaced and are easy to replace.
Simple to replace?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
The post-occupancy traffic monitoring, I believe, right now, there is one for Market Basket. And I was wondering if, I don't know if you have the answer, or maybe Market Basket folks would have an answer, if there's been any changes made to that intersection based on the current numbers, you know, current monitoring? Because just today, I drove on that Lake Street and the southbound traffic was all the way up to, what, GLC or something like that, you know?
Right.
So it's a pretty long queue heading south, even today, you know?
Yeah.
And it was not the best of the days, you know? So I was wondering if there's been already implemented some of the changes? And if not, how do we go about making those changes? I would assume it's MassDOT, but just wondering what your thoughts are on it.
Yes, so, and others who have been involved directly in those conversations, and I know Demola's and their representatives are here this evening to opine on that. But about a year, over a year ago, there was the outcome of a monitoring report that had indicated a concept to re-designate the lanes on the southbound approach and to optimize the signal phasing, the timing of the phasing. I don't believe that any of that has been implemented to date. It's still in the works, as they say. And I'm not certain, and Demola's and their representatives can answer more definitively, I'm not certain that DOT has definitively landed on that as the ultimate solution. So what we're suggesting this evening is that a more permanent, long-term solution, ineffective solution be identified, which I think we've just talked about, that impacted landowners participate in a meaningful way in helping to advance those improvements, which the applicant is in this case. And ideally, to the benefit of everyone involved in the case. So the short answer is, I don't believe anything's happened since the initial monitoring report was filed. I am not aware of any access permits that were granted to Demola's to conduct any work there. But I do understand that they've continued to be in conversation about implementing an improvement there.
Yeah. Just a follow-up on the MEPA process. And my understanding that right now, with the MEPA process, you have a conceptual okay for right-in, right-out onto Route 20, not the, I mean, my assumption is that you still need to go through actual permitting process with MassDOT, right?
That is correct. So we've vetted many alternative access solutions to MassDOT. They're all documented as part of that process. They posed the following questions to us. Do you need two curb cuts? Why not one? Do you need the curb cut on Lake Street? So we did a series of iterations where we eliminated the Lake Street driveway. We kept the Lake Street driveway, but only had one driveway in Route 20 and a series of iterations of that. Where we all landed was what is now on the plan. And the primary focus of commentary that DOT had was ensuring that the access did not in any way create, you know, some potential safety issue or operational issue to the Route 20 corridor. And was advising us strongly to restrict that left-turn movement, which we, in fact, are doing. The Section 61 finding, which is the memorialization of the mitigation for the project, very specifically references each and every one of the access points that are described and shown on the site plan currently. So there is concurrence with MassDOT that the plan, as it's being proposed to the board this evening, is the correct solution and that it will be subject to a monitoring program, which is also memorialized within the Section 61 finding. The access permit process is a rigorous engineering review process in which the materials of construction, the location of pavement markings and signs, scored concrete elements and things like that are shown in engineering-level detail so that DOT can officially approve their construction. We do not anticipate that there would be any material change to what is currently on the plan. But, you know, where we show a 40-foot curb radii, DOT may be more comfortable with a 38-foot curb radii. So those types of modifications, which are not materially going to affect what is shown on the plan, are going to be the outcome of that process. Even the materials of construction for the so-called stanchions, there are various materials that could be used. I showed an example of one that's been used in other areas of state highway. Those might be white instead of yellow. They may ring the gore area instead of being in a straight line. There's those types of details that still need to be hammered out during that process. Thank you.
Okay. Dino, do you have any questions? Dino, do you have any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Matt?
I'm good.
Okay. I guess at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item this evening? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jared Fiori on behalf of Demola's Supermarkets, Inc., again. And with me this evening is Carmine Tomas of Demola's Supermarkets, Inc., and Rob Najee of VHB, again. Pleasure to be before you again and have the opportunity to speak. I think you know our objections, our concerns, our issues, as we've gone through this process for a while now. Welcome the addition of Attorney Donahue here and appreciate his presentation. But I do have to comment on some of the presentation that was made and how it was opened, because I don't want you to be swayed in a particular way. I've identified for you before what your obligations are and how you can't leave those to others, including the ZBA board. There was comment about that to open it, about how the ZBA has made this unanimous finding that they approve of this. Well, they look at different standards. They're looking at other questions that the applicant has brought before them and what the applicant is seeking. Otherwise, your board wouldn't exist. So you can't be swayed just by that. I think I've identified for you before that that decision is actually on appeal in the Superior Court in Massachusetts. One of the reasons of which is my client wasn't available to participate in it. We didn't have proper notice. We didn't receive notice, didn't know it was occurring, and didn't have the opportunity to present to that board all the same concerns that we brought before you. So again, don't be swayed by the fact that the ZBA, a completely different board looking at something else, might have made a decision in that regard. Comment on this, I think, in one of the recent meetings, too. What was said before the ZBA by the applicant is completely different than what was said now in these proceedings. So you might recall, in that proceeding, they identified why that left turn on Route 20 was so important to them coming out of the site and how it had these unintended consequences. Well, those unintended consequences are significant for everyone in the area. If you've been down to the site, it's a very small site, and the applicant is asking to do a lot there, which is great for development for the area, perhaps, but maybe not all of those things. It brings a lot of traffic to an already congested area and not just traffic in general, but broadly traffic. A lot of tractor-trailers for different reasons into a small site, a small intersection. I also like to comment, and I've said this before, too, that stated in the presentation, you've gone through the history of this. The reason for that was purposeful, obviously, that because the applicant has spent a lot of money, spent a lot of time, tried to address all the comments, tried to address all the issues, that therefore somehow they've met the threshold and now, nine months later or whatever it is, they should be granted site access approval. Well, that's not the case. You still have the question of what the threshold is and whether it meets the obligations that the board has. Money doesn't matter. Time doesn't matter. Addressing all the concerns, it might not address them in a way that is meaningful, and we feel like that it hasn't. You know our objections to the issue with the traffic and the concerns that remain, in particular, traffic attempting to go into a client's plaza, return, reverse course, and using Lake Street in a way to turn left and to clog up the intersection. Tonight is the first that we've heard about the four-lane suggestion, but I should take that back. It's not the first we've heard of it. First, we've seen any sort of schematic and design. So we'd like the opportunity to be able to review that, comment on that, if that becomes part of your decision. Although it might be beneficial in theory, it seems like, to me at least, we've heard a lot tonight about something that's very conditional, you know, perhaps in the future this, perhaps we could do that. It involves land takings, obviously, that's been identified, that aren't committed to yet. And so we haven't seen anything concrete in that regard. In addition, obviously, you know, there's been a lot of peer review that has gone on in this case. If that is something new that's going to be part of it, that ought to be peer-reviewed, we think, as well. So those are sort of the overall comments we have. We continue to have our objections, our concerns about it. And Mr. Najee's here, available if you have any technical questions. I know there's some questions about what has been done in the area so far to date. He's here to speak with you if you have any questions. Thank you.
If I might just to clarify a point from Mr. Fiori. I want to make sure the board's clear. What our proposal is, is to make available a condition of approval, the 10-foot easement along our property, which provides the opportunity for others, or potentially YACCO, if that's what the post-occupancy monitoring demonstrates, to implement the purpose. The reason of showing it was so it could tie together the benefit of the easement and this property owner's contribution to that overall solution in some fashion. Whether it's being reviewed now with Mr. Najee and Mastod is up to him, obviously, in some fashion. And whether he sees it as a solution is for him to discuss as part of his client's post-occupancy monitoring, which is ongoing. But this simply facilitates an improvement by someone to be done in the future if it's determined it would be of benefit. So it's not really something to be reviewed because it is not a proposal that the applicant's going to do all of that work.
Understood. Okay. Is there other members of the public wishing to speak on this this evening? Yes, sir.
Tony Bonaventura, 120, HAV. So I'm pleased to see that the applicant has, I believe, offered something. They've offered a potential easement in the future. I do have a couple of questions about the plan. I don't know if it's possible to put that back up or... Along Route 20, I think I saw, you know, when I looked on the plan online, that there's a sidewalk that's going in along Route 20. Is that correct? Is the applicant putting that in, or is that a state?
Through the chair. The applicant will be building a new sidewalk along its frontage on Route 20, up to, but not beyond, the intersection with Lake Street. The plans that we've just presented assume that that sidewalk could continue up Lake Street on the east side and that an additional sidewalk could be provided. And really, as Attorney Donahue has outlined, the intent, the objective of that schematic design was really to simply identify the areas of potential land acquisition or taking that would be required to allow that to happen, so that we can definitively define within the confines of our property, the applicant's property, what their contribution would be.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't know, but the future that's on Lake Street will be decided at some point in the future, whether there's a sidewalk added or not. But the one that is going to be put in by the applicant, I was just wondering, given that there is a possibility of adding a fourth lane in the future, hopefully, I don't know all the workings of that, if, you know, how the state's going to be involved with that as well as the town. But, you know, perhaps at that point, with extra traffic, maybe the state would be interested in adding a right-turn lane in front of their property. That's something I could see as a possibility. And I was just wondering if it's feasible for, it seems like there's a lot of room in front of the property. I didn't know if it would make sense or if it even matters to have that sidewalk back a little bit with some green space area there. I don't think it has to be right on the road, but I was just...
You're suggesting on the Route 20 side?
Yeah, yeah, so that it would be kept back, so that if future work was done, they wouldn't have to redesign their site or, I don't know, it just seems like it's kind of safer in a way. May look nice and just something to look forward that I don't think would cause any harm, but I'm not sure. So I don't know if they have any comments on, or even thought about that, if they even want to respond.
Through the chair. All of the analysis that we've done, which looks into the future of the issue, really doesn't call for the need for another right-turn lane. As you're probably aware, the improvements on Route 20 are very, they're still fresh, so to speak. They were the outcome of a MassWorks grant project in combination with improvements that were made by the plaza across the street. So these improvements that are there today, you know, they're fairly recently built, are intended to accommodate the needs of the Route 20 corridor in the long term. So there's really not a need for that right-turn lane. There's not a need for it now, and we don't project there to be a need in the future. So the sidewalk, as it's currently shown, is, we believe, in the appropriate location and that there would be no added benefit to relocating it for an additional widening of Route 20.
Through the chair. Can I just add, is there a negative to doing it, or is it just that because they don't think that there's going to be a need in the future? Is there a negative, you know, is it a burden if they were to relocate? Is there a reason for it being out there? I guess is my question.
A reason for...
The sidewalk to be out, like, if hypothetically, if the state decided that they did want to move that, you know, add that extra lane, which I would, I think would benefit their site, is it a, would it be a problem? I'm not saying they have to commit to anything. I'm just wondering, is there something that I'm not seeing that it would be a problem?
I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think that that's something that DOT would be more involved with and not necessarily this board, because it would essentially be a taking, I would imagine, if I'm not...
It's quite a...
If I'm correct, it would be a taking from the state for the purposes of putting in that right lane and not necessarily, I mean, it's a development parcel that they're trying to maximize the development. As we can see, they're trying to maximize development on the parcel. So I think, you know, kind of offering up that right now, I don't know that that's...
I'm not asking, I'm not asking.
Especially if DOT is not looking to do so right now.
I'm sorry.
Sure, sure, no.
I wasn't asking for them to offer it up right now.
No, absolutely.
Obviously, the state, but I'm just, it seemed like there was a lot... You know, I wasn't asking for them to offer it up right now. It's obviously the state, but I'm just, it seemed like there was a lot of room and I just, you know, was kind of asking in advance if that would be an issue, if that would happen. It looks like it's not, but I was just curious.
Yeah.
It would be an issue.
Okay. Okay. That matters. So my only other comment, I think that, you know, I appreciate that they at least, you know, they did some work and I, of course, it could be that, it could be something in between or half of one, half of the other, so it does show conceptionally that there is a way for that to work. I think fairly, you know, easily, there's no such thing, but I don't know how to involve, and I say market basket, but that whole development. I feel, I don't know how that post-traffic study, like, how does that work? Is there a monetary thing if things don't work out? Like, how does that work? It's never really been explained. So they, you know, there's an issue and they need to resolve it and how does that work? Because this applicant's doing the same thing.
Sure, 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 sure. Chris, can you speak to whatever that...
So the post-occupancy monitoring studies require each year that the applicant conduct essentially a traffic study reviewing the assumptions that were made and provided for the board's consideration in comparison to actual counts that occur each of those years. If they hit certain thresholds of 10% above what the board based their decision upon, what is, can be required is further detailed in those conditions. So it typically will outline a number of items or mitigations that the town can then require the applicant to implement, whether that's phasing and timing, as was kind of discussed, or what we've included, and this is the actual implementation of this fourth lane. So typically what would happen in that process, should the report come back and show that it is above those thresholds, the applicant will return to the board and have that discussion of which of those measures that are outlined are appropriate to address what we are seeing as the traffic impacts on the ground. So...
Okay. Is that...
Yeah, that's a great, I appreciate that answer. So it sounds, you know, it's a possibility that the development across Route 20, it's more than market basket, obviously. I don't know how that all works, but it's more than just a supermarket. There's obviously a lot of apartments in there that create traffic at that intersection. So it sounds like as part of their mitigation, you know, working on that fourth lane could be something that is asked of them to contribute to. So I'm pleased to hear that and I think that, I hope that market basket considers working together and solving a problem that, I love market basket, but solving a problem that was kind of created by that development. And I really think that it will help their operation, too, because straightening out that lane, as we talked about at the last meeting, lining it up in and of itself is a nice improvement that, for that intersection in the future. And what happens further down is, you know, wins either way. I don't think it's a big issue. I think that's doable. So hopefully, they'll consider that and you'll encourage them to consider that, all the powers that be, and also recommend, if it's possible, the planning board to recommend, you know, to the other entities in town, you know, the select board and the town manager to keep an eye on this. I think that would be nice. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this this evening? All right, seeing none, I think that we have some decisions to make. Is there anyone else on the board that has any questions, comments? Or I think at this point, we need to make a determination whether or not to keep this a public hearing open? What are people thinking? I've, go ahead. I mean, I, for one, I do appreciate the time and effort that has been put into reviewing the traffic, the various traffic analysis. I am a bit more hopeful with this new conceptual plan for us to kind of digest a bit more. I guess it's, what is the pleasure of the board? Do we want to, you know, take another meeting to review this conceptual plan and see if there's other questions or items that come out of this? Or do we feel as if we have enough information to put into a decision?
With the new information and new thing that we saw today, I'd like it to be continued till next month so we can digest this information and perhaps make decision at the next month. That would be my suggestion.
I would agree because market basket still has some concerns and maybe by the next meeting, some of those concerns can be worked out and might have, you know, we might have a better outcome if we wait another meeting, so...
Chris, do you have any comments?
Discretion of the board. Certainly, I'm willing to have our engineer, town engineering and DPW review this. Again, as was stated, I think, you know, these are conceptual plans and, you know, if implementation was something that was contemplated for whatever reason, you know, the plans would be brought through to full construction design, so there would be those refinements that are required. But happy to have engineering weigh in if there's any additional, if we're going to continue it, but...
I personally think it would be worthwhile to have engineering take a look at it just so that we would really know the full scope of what the taking would be or what takings would be if there is, what would be the more, what would be the better option, option one or option two? I just think it would be helpful to have that analysis so that we can make sure that if there's anything that needs to be further inserted into the decision, that can be done. Is that, is that a fair?
If the board feels it needs additional information, then that's fine. I just want to, before we leave, be clear what you need from the applicant. What I'm hearing is you're looking for that from internal engineering review.
Correct.
If any board member needs anything or does not have adequate information that the applicant should provide, just indicate it so we can provide it hopefully in advance so you'll have time to digest it even before our meeting.
No, certainly. I think the idea would be to have this kind of internal review occur. At this point, I do recognize that there is a great deal of information that has been provided by the applicant on this. So I think we need to kind of take that information and then now take these ideas and kind of try to make some sense of it. Okay?
We do want to acknowledge that coming up with this fourth lane, option one, option two, certainly improves the situation and we appreciate that from the applicant's side. What I'd like, Chris, I don't know, like, either options would involve the town pump station, I am assuming a sewer pump station, right? And how would any of these options impact that and what needs to... If somebody can provide input, again, it's not going to happen right now, but when it happens, would that lend itself to one option being more preferred than the other one, you know? So some of those things, if DPW or whoever can review and provide that information, I think that would help us.
Sort of paraphrase, what I hear the inquiry is, is whether the offer of the easement made by the applicant is seen by engineering as a benefit to potentially a long-term solution.
Correct.
It's a fair question.
And the bigger question here is when do these things happen? How do these things happen? That, that I don't know. I mean, I would assume that it would be town's responsibility. I mean, what you are giving here is your portion of the, the applicant portion of the property, you are going to give easement, but other aspects, town has to deal with that.
It's similar to other intersections that this board's dealt with and other matters in which the impacts come from a number of sources. We talk about proportional contribution. Basically, the applicant's making their proportional contribution by offering the easement for no consideration to the town, obviously. So if we see that as at least a building block toward a solution that'll take more people to participate in.
Appreciate that. Okay. All right. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I move that this project be continued until next meeting, August 7th at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is Ayoud Drive Preliminary Subdivision. This is a continued public hearing, 239-247 Boylston Street. This agenda item has been removed, has been requested to be removed without prejudice?
Correct. We received a notice from the applicant late this evening requesting withdrawal without prejudice. They will not be moving forward with this proposal at this time.
Okay. So just in case there are individuals here for that, that particular hearing, it has been, it has been removed.
So we would still have to take a vote to allow that withdrawal without prejudice?
Oh, sorry. So can I get a motion to...
Approve the withdrawal without prejudice?
Thank you. Approve the withdrawal of the application for 239-247 Boylston Street without prejudice.
I make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the proposed demolition and construction of a commercial building administrative review. This is 294-298 Boston Turnpike LLC. This is a new public meeting. Do we have a notice that needs to be read for that?
No, so this one, this is an administrative site plan review. So ultimately, the building inspector will render a decision in the context of the zoning bylaw. But per our bylaw, we do put this before the board for their review and comment. So if there's comments that you would like for the building inspector to take into consideration for this project, you can submit them through our office and she will render that decision accordingly.
Any board members have comments on this particular?
I have no comment, Chief.
I have no comments.
No comments.
Is the applicant here?
Typically, we don't have the applicant attend.
For the administrative review, okay. I do have some questions. For this commercial business district, it appears that the, it appears that the proposed building is right on top of Tatum Road. And it looks like there's a 40-foot front setback. I don't know how much, what that's going to come into play if that goes in front of the ZBA. As it appears, is the proposed building is, you know, has some, has some setback requirements right off the get, right from the get-go. So that was, that was one question I had. The others, you know, it looks, it looks like the site plan is in order as far as, I think there's some concern about traffic from, from some of the neighbors that had concerns about that area, you know, the Lakeway Overlake District and everything that's been going on over there. But I don't know if the fencing and privacy is going to be part of this property for those neighbors. It looks like the parking is sufficient based on the proposed building. It doesn't look like there'll be any, you know, on-street parking. So having said that, I think it looks, you know, depending on those things and allaying the neighbors' concerns, which are valid, you know, as long as it's a use permitted whenever, because there's no, there's no mention of what business it will become.
Right.
But as long as it's a use permitted by right and, you know, in Section 6, Table 1 of the bylaw, then I think that could be, you know, that could be a stipulation, of course. It has to be a use permitted by right, whatever business winds up in that building. So those are just some concerns I had.
No, certainly. I think those are all valid items to bring to the building inspector as they review this. Okay. So there's no vote to be taken on this, correct?
No, just comments.
Those are the comments. Yeah, I think those are valid comments. Thank you, Tim. All right. Next on the agenda this evening, the proposed deck at 1 Abbey Lane, site plan modification for Shoesbury Partners LLC. This is a new public hearing for 579 and 585 Lake Street, 1 Abbey Lane.
Forgot to print the legal notice, so we're bringing that along in just a minute. Apologies for that.
Do you want to just hold that one and go to the next one then, just to keep things moving?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll come back to that one. We'll move to propose new use site plan approval, Azad Shoesbury LLC. Oh, you got it. All right, never mind. We'll just, let's do that and we'll read the public notice.
Okay. The Shoesbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, July 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Select Board's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, to hear the application of Kevin Callahan, 50 Hosmer Street, West Boylston, Mass. 01583, as required by the Town of Shoesbury zoning bylaw, Section 7F, for a site plan modification by the planning board to allow for the construction of a deck. The proposed layout plan is shown on a plan accompanied by the application that is named, quote, "Plan Showing Proposed Deck", end quote, prepared by Jarvis Land Survey Incorporated, 29 Grafton Circle, Shoesbury, Mass. 01545. The subject property is northerly of Lake Street and west of Arrowood Drive, of and consists in whole or in part of Shoesbury's Assessor's Tax Plate, 52 Plot 121000/10. A copy of the application and plans may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shoesbury, Mass., and on the planning board website at www.shuesbryma.gov/ongoingprojects.
Thank you very much. Is there a representative from, of the applicant this evening?
I don't believe so.
No? Okay, I do know that this, I don't know if everyone has had the opportunity to review this particular proposal. It's simply for the addition of a small deck.
Give some brief background on this one, perhaps? So this project is part of a multi-unit or 55 development that was previously approved by the board. As part of that process, decks in the backs of units were considered. And the board at that time, there was some concern from the public that was expressed in terms of the deck being located there. The, a condition was put in place that should decks be considered at a future time. It would be through a site plan modification with the planning board, essentially to open up the public hearing process again and to vet those concerns that were previously raised. So there is, you know, the deck that was proposed. This applicant has gone before the zoning board of appeals. It's slightly over one of the setbacks and has received approval for that variance. In addition, you know, the deck is fairly modestly sized, you know, really in terms of access. There is an existing patio space in the back of most of these units and some of the other properties on site have decks that have been installed, sorry, have been installed. It was provided as an option by the developer. So this project is, we do technically still hold a bond on this project and there is some additional work that is required to take place prior to release of that bond. However, the deck would not impact any of those remaining items that we have outstanding.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure. Chris, is it normal for a simple deck situation like this to come to us for site plan modification? Or is it very specific to... site plan modification, or is, is it very specific to this particular development where, for whatever reasons, we may have put in that kind of requirement?
Yeah, so I think in, in the majority of cases, decks would be handled as a de minimis or even a field change.
Yeah.
Um in this case, um I do know that uh that decks were a considerable concern from uh abutting residents. Um they were originally proposed as an option. Um and so that was, I think this was a, you know, this is related to a condition that was placed in that prior decision. Um that required the uh a modification in order to trigger, I think, the um public hearing process so that we could engage with the abutters at a future time should decks be proposed.
Okay.
Have any of the abutters um object to, to a deck that you know?
So we haven't received any um letters since this notice has gone out, um but, you know, it is an open public hearing at this time, so.
Any?
What, is, if this address, is it, is the address Abbey Lane or Lake Street?
Uh this is one Abbey Lane.
So is the, is the proposed deck in the rear setback?
Um so the setbacks uh look at the site as a whole, so that would be considered a side yard setback.
So this is a corner lot, in other words?
No, the, the rear um, the rear yard setback, the rear lot line would be further into the site um substantially.
So it's real like this, this is rear?
It won't, yeah, it won't show up on that plan, because again, this is, there's multiple units. This is a um.
Condo.
A condo association.
Okay. So it's not, it's not the fif- they're not encroaching into the, into the, it's not a fifty feet, this is a twenty-five foot.
Correct.
Issue. Um I don't see why it's a big deal.
I don't, I, yeah, I think in any other cases, as Chris said, this would be a de minimis change.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think um I have no issue with this. Um.
Nor, nor do I.
Yeah, me too.
If, is there any member from the public wishing to speak on this item this evening? All right, seeing none, um perhaps we can, I'd like to entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing for the proposed deck at one Abbey Lane, site plan modification.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. Um and can we just vote on?
Uh we don't have a decision just yet unfortunately, but we will for.
Okay, all right, wonderful. Next on the agenda, proposed new use site plan approval, Azad Shoesbury LLC. Um this is a new public hearing for two thirty-five, two thirty-seven Boston Turnpike. Mind?
Yes. The Shoesbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, July tenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M. in the Select Board's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, to hear the application of Joshua Lee Smith of three eleven Main Street, Worcester, Mass. zero-one-six-zero-eight, as required by the Town of Shoesbury zoning bylaw, section seven F, for a site plan review by the Planning Board to allow for a new use of the building, which requires twenty or more parking spaces. The proposed layout plan is shown on a plan accompanied by the application prepared for Azad Shoesbury LLC, dated November twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, prepared by H S and T Group Incorporated, seventy-five Hammond Street, Worcester, Mass. zero-one-six-one-zero, stamped by Daniel J. Tivnan, P L S, consisting of one page. The subject project is north of Boston Turnpike and west of Harrington Ave. and consists in whole or in part of Shoesbury Assessor's Tax Plate thirty-two, plot one-one-five-zero-zero-zero. A copy of the application and plans may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, Shoesbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website, W W W dot Shoesbury M A dot gov forward slash ongoing projects.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Colby O'Brien, the V P of Programs for Make an Opportunity Account, or the leaseholder of, of the site.
Good evening for the record. My name is Joshua Lee Smith. I'm an attorney with law firm Abottage and Dewey. Uh right off the bat, I, I will make a correction on the, on the address. I think at the time when we uh submitted this application, we were at three eleven Main Street, so we are now at four forty-six Main Street. Um we do have a, a really brief slide deck, uh which I'm gonna attempt to share my screen, unless, Chris, you have it on. Okay. All right, put pressure on me, Chris. Uh I think I might have it this time.
There you go.
Okay.
Worked, okay, wow. Here we go. Uh this advanced, oh. Or something advanced.
Push the spacebar.
Is it advancing on your screen, but just not on our screens?
Actually, that's a good point. There we go.
Okay.
Thank you for the assist. Uh so I'm, I'm sure the members are, are familiar with the site, probably very familiar with the site. Um this is two thirty-five uh Boston Turnpike. This is the former uh Worcester City Motel uh that had been in existence and in operation for, for decades. Uh so um a little while back, uh they ceased operations and uh the current property owner acquired title to the property and entered into a lease with my client, Making Opportunity Account uh, you know, Inc., with respect to uh its, its use. Um and as the uh members may know, this, this site is actually in operation now. Uh M O C is currently operating by virtue of a temporary occupancy certificate. Um and so now we have had a number of meetings with Chris McGoldrick, as well as Patty Sheehan, uh and other town officials with respect to making that uh temporary occupancy permanent. So just by way of a little bit of uh zoning history, we were before the Z B A a little while ago. They granted, uh there was a parking variance that we had to obtain, so we saw it and obtained that. Uh they unanimously approved that. So we're here before this board this evening uh with respect to site plan review. So it's a little bit of a technicality with respect to what triggers site plan review in this case, uh because there was a change of use. And uh because that use, technically, based on the use category that the building commissioner and, and Chris's office have determined, the closest used under the zoning bylaw uh that that aligns with, that because of the uh required number of parking spaces, uh that that triggers the site plan review. So it's a change of use and technically, the minimum number of parking spaces required. Uh and again, we obtained the uh the variants with respect to the parking uh from the Z B A. So we're here tonight with respect to site plan review. So this is a little unique. Um I'm sure this board is very, more familiar with projects where there's actual development happening here. The scope of the work involved uh with respect to this project is, the vast majority of the work was interior. Uh from the exterior, you could see that there certainly was, there, there were cosmetic aesthetic improvements with respect to the exterior. There was repainting. Uh utilities and life safety systems were upgraded. Uh other than that, there were no, there was no site civil work uh uh in, in connection with this project. The parking, there's fifty-one parking spaces that serve this building. The parking remains the same. The parking remain, i- is unchanged. Uh the driveway, uh in terms of its access, is the same. Uh the building footprint remains exactly the same. So there's really, this is, a- as a land use attorney, this is a pretty boring project. Most of the work uh occurred entirely uh as set forth in the, in the floor plans that the architects uh devised, and um those have been vetted and approved and a building permit um issued and, again, temporary occupancy certificate issued. Uh so with respect to that interior work, uh that, the, the interior work mainly consisted of transforming or, or converting those what were once motel rooms uh into guest rooms. And so uh as, as I believe the members know, uh the use here is a congregate living facility, um focused on helping homeless or formerly homeless families, not individuals, but families, uh to reside uh in these units. Total number of units are, are sixty-three units in total. Uh and um in addition, with respect to the interior work, uh as I had mentioned, the life safety systems were upgraded, the utilities were upgraded, water sewer, uh electric, uh other utilities, H V A C. Uh and um there were some other rooms made that were converted that may, may have been once the office, office use for the motel. Uh those have been converted either to uh office and/or common areas that serve the occupants of, of the building. Um so uh again, not much really in the way at all with respect to uh the um development of the property. And just on the screen, as you can see, this is a very familiar picture, uh photograph of what, what was once uh the exterior. Um and again, building footprint's not changed at all. Uh the signage has changed, um so it's no longer says Worcester City Motel. Uh but there was, obviously, there was repainting. They um, uh there were some uh minor improvements, mostly cosmetic in nature with respects to, with respect to the exterior. And here's just another vantage point um from, from the street uh along, along Route nine. And I'll just show, just for the record, this is, this is the, the site plan, um and I do that in air quotes, because again, there's, there's, there was nothing changing with respect to the site civil layout and design of this site. It's a long skinny lot. Um and uh there are two means of access that exist that, that have always existed, that, that will continue to, to exist. It's a long, sort of skinny, narrow shaped building with the parking running along it, alongside it. Uh none of that's changed. And then we, we did submit the uh, the floor plans as well, uh which again, were really just a, a conversion of um, of the units. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions the, the board may have. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any board member questions or comments?
Not that we don't like to see, but how are we involved in this as a planning board?
I'm sorry?
How are we involved on, in this project as a planning board?
How are you involved?
Yeah.
Well, again, the um, this is a, what's called a Dover Amendment uh protected project. So it's a Dover Amendment use. It's a nonprofit educational use under the statute. Uh when we had met with Chris and, and Patty Sheehan uh with respect to how do we make this temporary occupancy certificate permanent, uh the two, the two forms of uh zoning approvals that they identified were one, a variance, even, even though the parking configuration was not changing at all. Um we went, we, we agreed, we, we went and sought and obtained that from the Z B A. And then the second part is what we're here before you this evening, which is the site plan review. So technically, if you go through your uh, the, the town zoning bylaws, uh standards of review with respect to site plan review, noise, traffic, light, uh et cetera, that's what you're assessing with respect to this, this project.
Okay.
Just take a quick one. I know it, I know if, if, if it's something that we will require, but that area in general needs a little bit of better landscaping, you know, it's been there for a long time. So both from the town's point of view and for your own sake, I think if, if, are you proposing any landscaping at all, whether in the front or side uh or there?
No, um, you know, it hasn't, we really don't use the front of the building in the sense of, on the street. If you're suggesting, you know, I'm open to suggestions, working the landlord on landscaping, that would make sense. I'm no expert in landscaping, I would really know what to plan or do or put up. Uh but if you're talking about beautification, is, yes.
Yeah.
Uh is there a suggestion to, to do something?
I am not, not a landscaper either, but clear, clear, clearly, um that, that's been a site, not looked at that favorably for quite some time. And anything you can do to improve the visibility, uh the aesthetics, you know, I think it, it's uh not just for the town, but even for, for your own uh purpose. Uh I think um it, it would create a better image. Um I, I don't, I, I have no suggestions, but i- in a broader concept, some good landscaping to make the site look good from Route nine or elsewhere.
And, and I, and I respect that for sure, and because we're always looking to make sure. I mean, that's why we changed the sign out, you know, we don't want to look like a hotel or a motel. Um but I, in terms of what it was before the renovations completed, certainly a totally different looking building, um exterior wise, but I, I will bring that back to my, my team and the landlord. We do, we do this kind of work in terms of aesthetically making things look nicer.
Yeah.
Uh for all of our sites, because you want it to be welcoming and at least not a nice or, um the best way it can blend in, the better.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I, I understand what Perna's saying, of just kind of trying to soften it up a bit and it's not just for those that are driving by, but also uh for, for those that are, are occupying those units, to make them feel like this is a sense of home, right?
Yep.
So I, I think that's a, a point well taken, Perna. Um Tim, do you have any?
The, the uh, the two waivers that, I mean, there was more than two, but the two waivers requested really for the drainage, stormwater, because nothing's changing on site, as well as um a real, a real site plan, um which we don't have. But uh other than that, did, did any concerns from the fire department on queuing emergency vehicles in this long, skinny parking lot?
Sorry, I can't.
Would spend that way for.
Forever.
Fifty years?
Right.
All right. So I, I really don't have any, I don't have any objections, so.
I can add to that, just, just to say that we meet regularly with the town. We had a meeting this week. It was only five minutes, because usually, you know, things that come up, concerns are brought to the town manager and we address them in real time um on, on a regular basis. And so anything that does come up, we work with the town regularly through regular meetings with the school as well, just to address anything that, that comes up.
It appears that the, the building itself has been brought up to standard codes to twenty-five.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so, okay.
Are there other members of the public wishing to speak on this item this evening?
Dating Garnet, forty-three Le Blank Road. I live right around the corner. Um I just had a question. What differentiates the new rooms from what they were as hotel rooms? Like, how have we morphed it from being the Worcester City Motel? Like, it was in renovations already, and now we've just basically rebranded it into a shelter. So how have we changed it so much that it's acceptable for families to live there, that we have changed it so diametrically, that it's okay for us to house families there, that we've shut down all the other hotels? And now this one in particular, that's had such a horrific reputation through all these years, that we've chosen this one hotel. And I'm not saying our, our town is more than welcoming. I would just like to know, what makes these rooms okay for these families to reside in? Um and how long do they live there at a time, um thinking about these kids in these small rooms? Um so, so how have you made these rooms, the Worcester City Motel, you can change that sign all day long and call it M O C all day long. It's still W C M. I plowed there, I, you know, um it's still, you know, the building footprint, and those rooms were already, um they had already done the work there before you guys really moved in there from the days in. So how have you changed it that much that now it's okay, now that we've moved all of them from the other hotels?
Yeah, I can, I can, there's a few questions that I can answer. Um we, we worked with the landlord before he started doing furniture planning in these rooms. And so the, the furniture planning is not a typical hotel room where you walk in and there's a desk and a chair and um there's, you know, all these, you know, bureaus and things like that, people store things. It's drastically cut back uh for families to have space and rooms. And to answer your question around why this, this, this um location, it is strategically located in a value system that the state, the Commonwealth, H L C Executive Office of Houseable Liberal Communities really values in the sense it's, it's close to public transportation, it's right on public transportation, it's near grocery stores, it's near pharmacies, it's, it's in a, in a really well-traveled road. It's, it's set back a little bit in terms of where it's located. And those values meet the, the standards that H L C looks for in any E A shelter. Um they want families to have access to, to jobs, very walkable. You get on the sidewalk, you can walk to a thousand jobs. Uh they want you to be able to get your own groceries, your own food, your own pharmacy, very walkable, very doable. And there's also ample um apartments in that area. And so families, you know, do you have the opportunity, we want them to move out. They're with us um at most six months. They have a, a six, a seven month for a waiver extension, but they're, they're not there. Um we don't want them there as long as they have to be there. So the quicker we can move. Um, we don't want them there as long as they have to be there. So the quicker we can move a family out, the better for them and us. Cause then we can have a family that's on the waitlist, um, join us. And so at the end of the day, I know you asked a few questions, this site in particular really does match, um, locations that, that the state looks for. There, it's not in the middle of nowhere, uh, which really makes it hard to provide services and deliver services to families. But it's also not in the middle of a, of a residential neighborhood where it's on top of other things. And so it is, it looks like a motel. I don't disagree with you there. However, its use is correct. There is space in the, in the facility for families to cook, for kids to play. We are looking at some ideas in the parking lot as well to engage with families a bit more outdoors. And so we actually brought in a play bus. Um, I'm not sure if you drove by and you saw the play bus that, that came, uh, on a weekly basis. And so we bring things in, um, we, we work with the schools to support them with any other needs and bringing, leaving them and bringing them. Um, so it has been a really good partnership. Really glad you mentioned the community. The community has been nothing but supportive all around, um, food pantries, churches, the schools, um, the town. And so we're really grateful for that. Um, I know it, it looks like a motel, but it really is feeling like a community, um, for families. And so we appreciate that, um, for sure.
Follow up through the chair?
Yes.
One quick one. Um, you said the families are rotating out every six months. Will those same, uh, families stay in our school systems as they find apartments? There's, I mean, we have a lot of apartments in town, but they're not exceptionally affordable. Um, we don't, so I'm just wondering, will they be able to stay, whether they're already enrolled in our school system, will they be able to stay here? Or will they be like these families cycl- cycling in and out of our schools?
Yeah, another good question to check in.
I mean, I don't think that that's necessarily relevant to this conversation. Um, so if that's okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this? All right, seeing none, um, is, I, I guess the question before the board, uh, would we like to close this public hearing this evening?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, can I entertain a motion to close this?
Madam Chair, before?
Yes.
Just before, uh, you entertain that motion, with respect to the waivers, uh, I just wanna make sure that we are capturing everything. And I'm not sure if the gentleman, uh, he had mentioned two waivers, I think we had.
It's four.
Four, okay.
Yeah.
As set forth in the statement of support, Chris, is that through the chair, is that correct?
Uh, let me just confirm that, that you should, but.
Yeah, I mentioned two and three, but there are, there are four listed on page six.
Exactly. So, so, so that captures that. Uh, one that is not expressly set forth in the statement, however, we, we did discuss it with staff is the, uh, request for a waiver from the, um, second application fee. So there, there are two application fees in connection with this submission. Uh, the first was, uh, I think it's the, the standard, um, planning board application, uh, which, which the, uh, we, the applicant has paid. Uh, the second is, uh, for this type of site plan review. As opposed to, uh, an earlier matter which involved administrative site plan review, which I'm imagining has a much lower fee. The second fee is four thousand dollars. So we, we would request that that be waived, um, given the very limited scope of the project, um, certainly with respect to the site civil work that really is non-existent here. Coupled with the fact that, uh, I will say, yeah, this is a nonprofit educational use. Thank you.
Is that, is that within our purview to waive the fee?
I don't know that we can waive the fees.
Yeah, so the, the planning board has the discretion to waive any of the fees that they typically collect, so.
All right, so is that then placed into the decision?
Uh, yeah, we would list it as a, as a waiver request and the board would, and we will memorialize the board's vote on that specific waiver as well.
Okay. So I think that we can certainly, we can put that into, into the decision, uh, any issue. All right, so can I please entertain a motion to close this public hearing?
Can I make that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you. We'll have a decision at the next meeting. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Next agenda item this evening is proposed two-family and FAR up to four-point-oh special permits. Mr. Amani, this is a new public hearing for, uh, nine Walcott Road.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, July tenth, twenty-twenty-five at seven PM in the Select Board's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal, Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue to hear the application of Abibola Amani, nine Walcott Road, Shrewsbury, Mass. zero-one-five-four-five for site plan approval and two special permits by the Planning Board as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section seven F, section seven B, eleven, and section six, table one, to have a two-family dwelling in the residence B-two zoning district and to allow for the floor area ratio, FAR, to be up to four-point-zero as shown on plans entitled Proposed Building Plan dated September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four, prepared by B and R Land Survey Incorporated, P.O. Box one-zero-two, Worcester, Mass. zero-one-six-one-three, stamped by Robert J. Smith, PLS, consisting of one page. The subject, uh, project is located at nine Walcott Road, southerly of Beach Road and west of Maple Avenue, and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax thirty-two, plot three-five-four-zero-zero-zero. Copy of the application and plans may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website at www.shrewsburyma.gov/ongoingprojects.
Um, just, um, as a item for this, so, um, and a little bit of a background, the, the board will recall this, uh, was a decision, um, that, uh, failed on a split vote, vote by the board, uh, at their prior meeting. Um, we did, uh, receive a request for, uh, potential reconsideration from one of the members. But we were outside of the timeframe for that, uh, consideration per the bylaws. Um, so we have brought this forth, um, to the board, um, in accordance with, uh, the MGL forty-eight, section sixteen, which allows the, the board to consider, um, essentially a denial or a, a failed application within that two-year period. Um, so we would require a vote of the board, um, for, uh, to hear that under that, uh, provision. Um, and then the board would proceed as normal. Um, given we are, um, lacking a member this evening, um, I would request, uh, respectfully that we, uh, continue, uh, in order to give, um, the applicant, um, a full board for that consideration of that vote.
No issue with that? Uh, any other, uh, any concerns from the other board members on that?
So, just a clarification question. So this is, this is an exemption under chapter forty-eight, section six?
Uh, section sixteen. So once the board has rendered a final vote, um, it's typically there is a two-year period, so on a denial. Uh, there's a two-year period that an app- applicant cannot, um, um, apply, uh, without, um, providing some difference, um, or, uh, the board to allow them to proceed in that two-year period. So they, they can apply, but the board, uh, can simply vote to, um, not rehear that. Um, that's to, uh, prohibit people from kind of continuously submitting the same application and, and burdening the board through that, um, provision, so.
So the, the request on Mr. Amani's behalf came from within the board?
So that request is, uh, sorry, the, the request to reconsider, one of the members, um, did, did request that, but we're outside of that time period, so we have to use that section sixteen provision in order to, to bring this back to the board's consideration, so.
Fair enough. Okay.
All right, can I get a motion to continue this public hearing to our next meeting, August seventh?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right. Hey, new?
If we may, um, so I, I discussed with the applicant on the, um, prior, uh, project, the two-thirty-five and two-thirty-seven Boston Turnpike.
Yeah.
Uh, we did close the public hearing, obviously. Um, however, uh, given the timeline, um, of their temporary occupancy permit, the August seventh meeting will be, uh, their, temporary occupancy will have expired by that time.
Okay.
We do have a draft decision that is prepared. Um, it doesn't include the, the waiver of the fees, but we can certainly work that in and, and twor- in terms of what is, um, filed. Um, but I would ask that, uh, this evening, the board, uh, take a vote on, uh, the application or, um, set a, uh, special meeting in order to hear that, um, um, decision.
I don't, other board members, I have no issue of taking a vote on this this evening.
Agreed.
Yep.
Agreed.
All right, so, um, can I get a motion to, um, for, on the application for, what number am I on? Two-thirty-five, two-thirty-seven Boston Turnpike? With, um, a understanding that the, any decision drafted right now will also include, um, the, um, adoption of the waivers?
I move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we'll get you guys the, the decision. We'll be all set. Yeah? No? All right, uh, new business, um, we need to discuss and vote on the covenant release for Hyatt Circle.
Correct. So, um, at the, um, board's prior meeting, um, we did enter into a tri-party agreement, um, for security of, uh, the Hyatt Circle subdivision, um, commensurate with that. Um, uh, this would be the covenant release to actually, uh, release those lots that are now secured by that tri-party agreement. So, um, we were looking to do that, um, typically in tandem, um, but given that we had not prepared the covenant release, um, we are seeing that piece tonight, so.
Okay. Is there any issue, um, from town, like from engineering, the covenant? Like, they've met all of the items in their covenant, correct?
Uh, so the, the covenant release is a different form of surety, so the, the tri-party agreement is, they essentially have two, um, they have double surety, so the, the covenant can be released and the tri-party will still remain to, protect the infrastructure and roadway improvements that are required for the subdivision.
Right, understood. Are there, um, any board member questions, comments on the release of this covenant?
No questions.
No, no questions or comments.
All right, so I guess I'd like to entertain a, a, a motion. Do I have to ask for pub- if there's public comment?
No, this is just a.
Um, I'd like to entertain a motion to release the covenant for, um, Hyatt Circle.
I move that motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is the bond release for Wyman Farms.
Um, so this is, um, the bond release for the Wyman Farms, um, project. Um, at the board's last meeting, we did receive a number of, um, comments and letters, um, which are outlined in correspondence, uh, this evening, um, from applicants outlining their concerns. Um, the applicant has, uh, we did meet with the applicant, uh, to discuss from our previous comment letter, um, on items that, uh, needed to be addressed prior to, um, the bond release, um, and suggested, um, improvements. Um, the one, uh, the two remaining items, um, in my mind are, um, the infiltration basin, uh, at the, uh, kinda centrally located of the site, um, and, um, the Conservation Commission, uh, process being closed out. Um, you know, ultimately, the, the board's bond, um, does not really have an impact on the Conservation Commission closeout. We do like to see that, um, but it's, you know, it's not necessarily commensurate with that. Um, in terms of the infiltration basin, the, um, uh, um, one of the suggested, um, fixes to that, uh, was to, uh, do recalculations of, uh, the infiltration basin as a detention basin. Um, so currently it is not draining properly, um, but to review if those calculations assumed as a detention basin still meet all stormwater and conservation regulations. Um, I have not seen those figures yet, um, produced. Um, so I defer to the board if that's something that they would like to review prior to a release of the bond. Um, but, um, all other, uh, work items do appear to be complete.
Okay. Um, one question of, when are they anticipating to go before Concon?
Um, I, I do not have that information.
Okay.
So, do I, if I understand this correctly, now, the, the, is it the, is the applicant seeking the, uh, the bond release? It wants to classify the retention ponds as something different?
Uh, correct. So infiltration basin, uh, would be that the water, um, is removed in a certain period of time as calculated in their stormwater report.
Yeah.
I believe in this case it was twenty-four hours.
Which that was redundant throughout all the emails from the?
Correct. And in this case, in this case, um, the infiltration basin does not operate that way. Um, so the suggestion was to, uh, recalculate, essentially do the stormwater report over again, assuming that it is a, um, detention basin. Um, if those calculations met the standards required by the, um, by the bylaws, um, you know, that that could potentially be considered as a de minimis or, uh, field change.
State law, you mean, or the, the, or the, or the town?
There's a couple, there's a couple, I mean, so there's a couple regulations that go into place. So we have the stormwater report from the board's, um, action. Um, and then Conservation Commission typically looks at those calculations as well.
So when this, when Wyman Farms was built, this, these ponds, or this drainage system, was not, was classified in, as it was supposed to drain?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
So then where does that leave the, where does that leave the, if, 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 if they call it something different, where does that leave the residents in Wyman Farms? It's kind of a rotten deal, isn't it?
So it, it, so again, it looks at the calculations and if they, they meet the requirements for stormwater mitigation, um,
Okay.
In terms of that. So if those calculations do not work, that would not be a viable solution.
Yeah.
And so that's why we defer to the board if that's an, an item that needs to be addressed prior to a.
I guess another follow-up question to that would be, is this in consideration because there's no, in reality, there's no fix for this? In other words, there, there's no additional work that could be done to allow these to, to drain quickly within twenty-four hours?
So it's not something that the town would evaluate? That would be something that the applicant would have to evaluate and propose,
Yeah.
To us as a, as a mitigating.
But it doesn't seem like the applicant's interested in doing that.
We have not received that at this time.
Okay. It's, it's not a public hearing, is it?
This is not.
It's not a public hearing.
So we don't need.
Okay. Uh, just it, yeah, it's, 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 this is a tough one because almost every resident, um, sent a,
Right.
Sent a letter of, of, of concern about it, um, and they're invalid. So this, yeah.
Discussion of the chair, if you wanna take a comment on it, um, but it, it is not a public hearing, so we're not obligated to take any comment.
Okay. I, I, I mean, it, I, I'm fine with, with allowing if, so sir, if you have, do you have something that you'd like to say on this particular matter?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, if you could just approach the microphone, please give us your name.
I'm Steve Ednacasa. I'm the developer of Wyman Farms, and I also live at Wyman Farms, nine thirty-five Main Street. Um, we built this development, um, about five years ago, maybe. Um, we had placed several bonds, we had, um, we placed additional ba- cash bonds for, um, retaining walls, for slopes, for aspils, for drivers, and all that work has been done to the satisfaction of the town. We, we had a meeting onsite with engineering and planning board, it wasn't Chris, the original meeting was with Bernie. He came up with a punch list, uh, went through the punch list, completed all the items, had a satisfaction. And so as far as I'm concerned, um, I'm, I'm completed. Uh, they did have a, um, an issue with a, uh, there was some stones along the edge of the water that had shifted after five years, um, due to the extreme frost we had last year. Last winter was a brutal year. We had a lot of things failed on us and, and number of developments that have never failed before. Uh, we had a septic system that actually froze and, and, and in fifty years of building, I've never had a septic system freeze on me. So there were things that happened last year. So, and, and any event, I went in and repaired that, even though it was not my responsibility. Um, because, because I didn't wanna deal with it in front of the board. Um, a- and. And, and argue, was it defective, was it not? They had high numbers to fix it and I sent my crew in there and we did it anyways, just to create some goodwill. And, and basically, I want to just close this out. As far as the detention pond, there are two detention ponds on the, on the property. There's one directly behind my property, which drains. There's another detention prob- prob- pond next to my house, behind some of the residents, that gets a constant flow of water from the uphill developments. There are multiple developments uphill of this development that have no detention basins that are getting a constant flow of water. So, if this basin did not drain, it would overflow. This basin has never overflowed. If you go out there today, there's a constant flow of water from the uphill developments coming into this, going into that basin. So, how is that my responsibility of what? So, originally, there's a pipe that comes out of Bonny Dell that discharges in the property and we, we wanted to pipe that directly through the property, but we were not allowed to touch that pipe because there's some regulation, I'm not sure exactly what the regulation is. But if we had touched that pipe, then the town would have some responsibility for our drainage, I think that's how it works. But I, I'm not sure exactly, but we were not allowed to touch that pipe and that pipe is constantly flowing water out into that pond. So, if there's a constant flow of water into that pond and it doesn't drain, why is it an overflow? It doesn't overflow, so it's obvious that it does drain. Now, at what rate? It doesn't drain fast enough for it to go through. Is there a solution? There is a solution. You could put it under, you could put it under pipe in that property. Is that my responsibility? I really don't think it is. So, I think that I've done my part, I built it according to the plan, it was inspected, it was built all according to the plan. That project is beautiful, that's the nicest project. I happen to live there, I happen to be very biased, but it'd be hard to argue that that's not a beautiful project from soup to nuts all the way through. So, I believe I've done everything that required of me and all the bonds, those cost bonds have been placed on there. All that work is not, does not, that work has not been disputed at all, nothing. So, I think the board should release the bonds.
Thank you, sir.
That's my position.
Thank you, sir. Alright.
So, that's a, it's, it's a, it's a new piece of information, it's not as if it doesn't, number two doesn't drain. It's the, it's being, sounds like it's being constantly fed from another, another source.
So, so that's, that's the basis of some of the recommendations, that it be recalculated as a detention basin, essentially how it's currently operating, to see if that still meets all of the standards. Should it not meet those standards, then we would look at other mitigation features as have been discussed.
So, it's, it's, it's with Concom right now?
Uh, I believe it is, is correct, I believe it is. I don't know if they've applied to Concom at this time for the final closeout.
It sounds like to me, I wouldn't want to do anything until Concom makes a decision. No, my, my apologies, my apologies. What my, what I was saying is, my initial thought is, it sounds as if this is something that Concom needs to weigh in on a bit before we, before I personally could feel comfortable releasing that bond. But I, I think that that's, that seems to make good sense to me. I'd ask other members of the board to weigh in on that.
Excuse me, but do residents get to speak? Do we get to speak?
Certainly, sir, I'd be happy to let you speak.
So, I, I'm Kevin Cowan, I live at number twenty. This detention pond is right behind my house, I'm also the president of the homeowners association. And I wrote one of the letters two years ago. He sent out a letter to all of us telling us he was going to take care of it in very short order and there was never a shovel even dug. My understanding is, in talking to conservation was, there were permits applied for to put a pipe to drain that pond. It never happened and I sent a copy to planning of that letter that was, that was sent to every resident. It never happened. So, this is a nuisance, I can tell you, there's, there's algae growing in there, there are frogs in there, there are lots of mosquitoes, it's stagnant water. So, I do believe this needs to be addressed. And also, in talking to the conservation officer, there was a detention pond over by Market Basket that wasn't functioning properly. They made them do a major reconfiguration. If the bond gets released and they decide we have to take care of this, it's going to be on us, it's going to be on the residents. So, I believe this needs to be addressed.
Thank you, sir. What is the pleasure of the board?
Is this anything the town engineers would weigh in on?
So, the town engineer's recommendation was to do the recalc-
Do the, okay.
There's, sorry, not the recommendation, their suggestion was that they could pursue recalculation as a detention basin to see if that resolves the issue rather than going toward further, more expensive mitigation. But that information has not yet been provided to our office.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nobody's done it.
Did they need to get sign off from Concom at all on this part?
Again, technically not related to our bond. However, traditionally, we have tried to close out all of our process before we release the bond. My understanding is their NOI still requires some action by conservation commission to close that permit out.
Okay, so I, and so I, I, I personally think that it's, that we're not ready to release that bond yet.
Yep.
I, I agree.
Agreed.
Okay, so, I mean, there's just no action taken on it, correct?
Yeah, we could just take no action or, you know, if the board wants to, yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay, alright. Next agenda item is discuss and deliberate on thirty-three sixty-nine Green Street decision for site plan approval and special permit.
So, this is the decision for three thirty-four, three thirty-eight, and three thirty-eight R Grafton Street. This is the Dan Matt Realty Common Driveway. Special permit, there are two decisions, essentially carbon copy other than, one is the special permit and one is the site plan. Sorry, did I get that right?
Common driveway?
Correct, yep.
Any-
There is only one decision, it's the special permit for the common driveway.
Any questions or comments from the board on, on these decisions?
I don't have any, I'm, I'm in favor.
I'm in favor, yep.
Alright, so, do we, can we bundle these two or do we need to? Do I have copies? It's one. I have one for a special permit and then one for site plan approval and special permit.
I think you're, you're looking at Green Street, I think, right?
Yes.
What, what Chris said is the other one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, I jumped ahead, my apologies, my apologies. Alright, so there's just the one, so can I get a motion?
Sorry, so there are two, so the, sorry, the special permit is for the common driveway and the site plan approval is for the actual commercial space that is there. So, it is-
Right, so it is two, can we bundle them?
Um, I would ask that we do them separately because we can have a map act on the special permit.
Okay.
Is this a vote or deliberation? Is this, is that the same thing?
Well, I, I guess that, I've, is there any comments or questions from the board on either of these decisions? That, I think that's the deliberation, right?
Got it, I do, I do not have any, we, we, I think we've sufficiently gone over this.
Alright, so can I entertain a motion on the special permit?
I move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now can I entertain a motion on a site plan approval?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the site plan and special permit for thirty-three to sixty-nine, excuse me, for three thirty-four, three thirty-eight, and three thirty-eight R Grafton Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Aye. I screwed that up, sorry.
No, that's okay.
The double three's got to throw over.
Alright, next item, discuss and deliberate on thirty-three sixty-nine Green Street decision for site plan approval and a special permit. Has everyone had the opportunity to review these two decisions? Are there any questions or comments concerned on these items?
More questions, chair.
No?
No?
No questions.
Seeing none, can I entertain a motion on the, a special permit?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And then, can I please entertain a motion on a site plan approval and special permit?
I move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Next item is discuss and vote on bond issuance for four thirty-five South, South Street site plan modification?
Uh, correct, so this is a bond issuance for the El Hamer School, four thirty-five South Street. It's a very small amount, but nonetheless, there is some utility work, that amount has been received. So, this would just memorialize that bond amount.
He left. We went too long.
Oh, yeah, right, right. Can I?
I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next is bond issuance for three sixty-nine, three seventy-seven Holden Street site plan approval?
Um, so similarly, this is the bond issuance for the three sixty-nine, three seventy-seven Holden Street project was, which was approved at the board's last meeting. We have received the check for that. We've also held a pre-construction for this project already and some of the site work, which normally can be done anyways, has been undergone, so recommend that this bond be issued.
Can I get a motion to issue this bond?
I move that we issue the bond for three sixteen-nine, three seventy-seven Holden Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Next is a bond reduction for Summit Ridge Estates.
Thank you, so this is an item that's been on our agenda. So, this is the bond reduction for the Summit Ridge Estates. We still have some outstanding information that we are requesting from them. I did have a conversation with Klee on Tuesday. They were working to get the remaining information from engineering. I do not have the, the bond reduction amount, so this is a reduction for work that has been completed. But without a dollar amount, we cannot issue that this evening, so I would request that we pass over it.
Okay, no action? Um, next is voting on a community preservation committee appointment. So, do we need to have a volunteer from the board to be on the CPC?
Didn't we do that, didn't Steve volunteer?
Uh, correct, so his, his appointment has expired, so we need to appoint-
He's not here, can we reappoint him?
I, I like, I like that, I like that.
You could, he has-
Unless like-
No, I'm just, I'm just kidding.
I did my share in that.
Uh, one year.
Oh, that, wait a second.
It, it may have been ended.
That went by fast, it seemed like he just was appointed, that must have been for not, something else.
I think it was for CMRPC, I think that was a CMRPC one, yeah.
Alright.
Is there any member of the board that is willing and able to participate on the community preservation committee?
I did, I did it already, so I, I have-
Deadly silence. Deadly silence.
I mean, quite honestly, I am, I am stretched at work, I, I don't have the ability to, to, to do it.
Nor do I, Julie, I don't have any, I, I cannot do it.
Yeah.
So, please don't appoint me, Dino. Well, I owe you one, so I'll, I'll take it.
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you, Dino.
Dino, appreciate that, thank you. So, I guess we have to make a, a formal, a formal vote on that to, like to nominate Mr. Allardy to be our planning board representative for the community preservation committee, is there a second on that?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, Dino, you're going to vote against this?
Know what I have to do.
Appreciate that.
Uh, so, yeah, the meetings, we're kind of in the process right now of finalizing some of our, during our annual update of the plan and the application process. Actually, kind of an opportune moment, we're shifting towards online applications through our regular, we're doing that currently with planning board applications and zoning board of appeals, so I'm doing that similarly now with CPC, so, but they're working on finalizing that process and we'll see if applications come in, we have a couple, one of which our office is developing that we'll be looking at applying, which either be the fall town meeting, potentially the subsequent May town meeting.
Wonderful.
Who is the CPC chair now?
Uh, Deborah Mooney is currently the chair.
Okay, um, next is discuss and endorse WDRD planning board and ANR authorization sheet.
So, this is just our annual signatures, it's a requirement of the Worcester District Registry of Deeds to verify your signatures and endorse the town engineer as the authorized agent to act on ANRs.
Okay, any questions, comments, concerns from the board?
So, they, they literally have our signature on file at the registry deeds?
Correct, so when you sign those special permit decisions, they do verify those and-
I'm fairly confident your, your signature's in there somewhere.
I cannot object, it's too late.
Okay, I, I guess I'd entertain a motion to endorse the registry deeds planning board and ANR authorization sheet.
Is that something that is physically, oh, okay.
Yeah, you'll physically sign it.
Yeah, I move, I move that we endorse the WDRD planning board and ANR authorization sheet.
And is there a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. Any old business this evening, Chris?
None this evening.
And just to make note of the correspondence that has been received primarily on the Wyman Farms, there is one for five twenty-five Hartford Turnpike and the ANR for two eleven River Prospect Street, noted. Any other items before the board this evening? Seeing none, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.